Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is August 28, 2017. We are holding today's meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. And I am Frank Clark. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. Our order of business will start with the CEO report, public participation. We will then go into executive session, after which we'll return and begin the process of voting. As I do at every meeting, I want to remind all of you that are participating, particularly during public participation, that courteous and respectful behavior is both expected and obviously I hope that you adhere to it. I remind everyone that not only are the cameras upstairs on the third floor filming a press conference, which is why I was a little bit late, but they'll some of them will be down here later on. But we are on TV and of course this is also filmed and people view this, particularly our young people. So your behavior sends a strong message. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of Monday, August 28, 2017 is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please read, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong?
Present.
A member Rivera?
Present.
Vice President Guzman?
Present.
Member Dr. Hines?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
And President Clark?
Present.
Six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to introduce, I'm sorry, recognize CEO Forrest Claypool and our General Counsel Ronald Marmar and our Chief Education Officer, Dr. Janice Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please proceed with the business portion.
I think Jenny Bennett is going to do the presentation, so Jenny, if you would approach the podium.
Good morning. President Clark, members of the board. My name is Jenny Huang Bennett. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for CPS. I'm here today to provide an update of the board's finances as well as a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget that's before you for consideration today. I'd like to start with a recap of the fiscal year 2017 finances. As you recall, the board passed a $5.41 billion fiscal year 2017 amended budget. This budget was amended in February of 2017 in order to address a veto by Governor Raul Nore of Senate Bill 2822 of $215 million of state funding for CPS pensions. In addition to this, the state delayed $467 million of state grant funding prior to the GAN issuance that we executed in late fiscal year 2017. As a result of this state funding shortfall, CPS had to manage through a shortfall of approximately 10% of our operating budget. This doesn't even account for the fact that the state grossly underfunds CPS as compared to other school districts. Despite these difficulties, CPS was able to manage through these shortfalls through active management, including creating hundreds of millions of dollars in internal efficiencies, increased revenues, as well as interim short-term borrowing to address the state's delayed block Despite this revenue shortfall, CPS has made significant progress in its budget towards structural balance. Over the last two years, CPS has decreased its deficit from $1.1 billion in fiscal year 2016 to $544 million beginning deficit in fiscal year 2018. This is despite various cost increases, which have been managed down through internal efficiencies, and is also the result of $454 million in new revenues in fiscal year 2017 from various state and local resources. These various resources include $250 million in a new pension levy, which will grow based on property tax values, as well as additional state funding. This decline in the budget deficit is over half of the deficit that we experienced at the beginning of fiscal year 2016. With the passage of SB1 or legislation similar to SB1, CPS anticipates making further progress towards structural balance, which will help ensure financial stability for the district and the children it serves. As it relates to fiscal year 2018, the proposed budget before you includes a $5.75 billion spending plan matched with $5.75 billion in revenues. This budget represents a 5% increase in the per pupil funding to the schools as compared to fiscal year 2017. The base SBB rate is $4,290 in fiscal year 2018 versus $4,087 in fiscal year 2017, or $203 more per pupil. This is important to note. While specific schools may see declines due to changing demographics, overall, the district is spending more in the classroom in fiscal year 2018 than it was in fiscal year 2017. This budget aims to protect investments in the classroom and focuses on much-needed new revenue sources, including the assumption of $300 million more in state revenues and $269 million of other local resources. As I mentioned earlier, schools will receive a base rate of $4,290 per student, which totals $1.9 billion in funding through student-based budgeting allocated to the schools. In the student-based budgeting model, additional weights are placed by grade level, as well as diverse learner LRE categories. Schools will also receive additional funding for foundation positions, adjustments for teacher experience in multiple buildings, state supplemental general state aid, or SGSA, federal funding, including title funding, which is based on poverty concentration. And this year, the budget also allocates funding for diverse learners based on student IEP needs, as well as other specialized programming. In fiscal year 2018, the budget also aims to protect the academic achievements of our students, which have accelerated despite our financial challenges. These accomplishments were memorialized in a landmark study of statewide educational outcomes by the University of Illinois at Chicago, which found that CPS students are outperforming their peers in every major racial category and ethnic group throughout the state. In its academic progress report, CPS reported dramatic improvements since 2011 on key metrics, including participation in the arts, math, reading, and graduation rates, freshman-on-track rates. For school year 2015 to 2016, the freshman-on-track rate hit an all-time high of 87.4%. The dropout rate was cut in half to 6.8%, and the attendance rate was 93.4%. CPS students have achieved a record-high graduation rate, with 73.5% of students earning a diploma. The graduation rate has steadily risen over the past six years, growing more than 16 percentage points since 2011, when just over half of CPS students earned a high school diploma. In addition, CPS students have accelerated in graduation rates nationwide. While students nationally achieved a record-high graduation rate of 83.2% for the 2014-15 school year, CPS students are outpacing their peers with a graduation rate that is growing more than three times faster than the national rate. The national graduation rate for African-American students grew 7.6 points, while CPS's rate went up by 12.6 points. The national rate for Hispanic students went up 6.6 points, while CPS's rate went up 14.3 points. According to a University of Chicago study, roughly 42% of CPS graduates enroll in four-year college or university, quickly approaching the national average of 44% college enrollment rate. And U.S. News/World Report heralded seven CPS high schools among the top 10 schools in Illinois. Five of those schools were also ranked nationally. On the next few slides, I'd like to highlight a few facts about the district and the way that we spend money. This slide shows the composition of over 36,000 employees at the district. Over 97% of CPS staff is employed directly in schools, which includes teachers, principals, assistant principals, custodians, engineers, nurses, and other school support staff. The chart on this slide illustrates the fiscal year 2018 budget, broken down into various expense categories. And what this chart illustrates is that over 2/3 of the spending, or 66%, is spent on salaries, benefits, and pensions. Yet despite the various efficiencies created internally and the increased revenue, CPS still is challenged by increasing pension contributions, a contribution that CPS is the only school district in the state that has to make on its own. The cost in fiscal year 2018 is expected to be $784 million, rising to $889 million in fiscal year 2022. CPS anticipates that with the passage of Senate Bill 1, the state will begin to address the inequity of funding by funding over $200 million of the district's pension payment. However, even this pension payment is only a fraction of the cost that the district faces on an ongoing basis. On the next slide, we highlight the inequity of the state pension funding for the school district. What the slide shows is that in fiscal year 2017, the state contributed $32 per child for pension payments versus $2,447 per child to students elsewhere in the state. Put another way, CPS receives 1.3% of the amount that other school districts receive in pension funding from the state.
You know, this is such a dramatic chart that it makes me want to have you repeat it. $32 per CPS student for the pension contribution versus $2,447 outside of our district?
Yes, sir.
Every other school district?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With SB1, we do anticipate that the inequality of this funding will become more equal, but it only starts to address the inequities of the funding situation. On this slide, we touch on the fiscal year 2018 capital budget. This capital budget is $136 million of largely emergency facility repairs and deferred maintenance. It is a smaller capital plan, although last year in fiscal year 17, the board did approve a $938 million multi-year capital plan, which included $194 million of deferred maintenance projects, which are currently in the works. CPS is looking at its funding sources, and once its financial situation is a little more clear, would look to see if there is a larger program that we may come to the board and ask for approval at a later date.
This is another important item, because we may hear that during public participation today, but a number, many people have raised issues around the conditions in their schools. And we, of course, recognize that $136 million, while a very large number, is wholly inadequate to address all the needs, all the facility needs that our schools face, and our anticipation, particularly our expectation, particularly if the deal on the table today actually goes through, that we may be in a position later in the year to actually augment this $136 million. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And that concludes my presentation.
Board members, questions?
Jenny, can you give a perspective on the budget this year for ODLSS compared to last year?
Sure. So this year, the budget for ODLSS has increased from last year. The total amount of spend for fiscal year 18 is budgeted at $867 million, which is a $29 million increase from last year.
That's another important statement that perhaps you want to restate, because I'm sure we're going to hear it again today. There is a strong perception with some of our teachers that the opposite has occurred, that we have decreased that budget. So these numbers speak for themselves. Where is the disconnect with some of our teachers?
I think some of it is due to changing demographics at specific schools. We heard some of this during the budget hearings as well, in terms of overall spending, not just for diverse learners, but for the district overall. In both scenarios, we have increased spending, both at the school level, as well as for ODLSS. And depending on decisions made by the principals at specific schools, that may change how the impact of the budget is at a specific school. But for the district overall, we have increased spending on ODLSS by $29 million, and then also for school spending overall.
What percentage is that?
It's approximately 3%.
Okay.
And Jenny, actual enrollment at schools, once it happens, it gets trued up on the 20th day. Is there anything that happens before then to sort of check on whether the projections that we based our budget on are actually aligned with what the schools, the number of students the schools are receiving?
We have a 10th-day enrollment check as well, and we'll take a look at what the funding looks like at that point, and then at which point, on the 20th day, we'll adjust the school budgets.
If I can add to that as well, we started the appeals process on August 1. And if schools in that process talked about a disparity in student enrollment based, when we compared it to what was in SIM, we did make adjustments as well there for those that were out of whack.
So there was an appeal in August that schools were able to?
If anybody, if a school appealed because the number of students projected in SIM was substantially higher than what CPS projected, they were able to do it, and we honor that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny.
Great, thank you.
Forrest, are we back to you?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Illinois, as many of you know, is on the verge of historic education funding reform that advocates from all corners of the state have worked to enact for years, actually decades, and something we may see come to fruition in the coming days. Chicago's voices have been critical to this effort. With the 20 for 20 campaign that so many parents and principals led over the last two years to the civil rights lawsuit to fight to fund all of our schools and students equally. And I want to thank every single parent, teacher, principal, student who participated in the last two years in those campaigns that brought awareness to the radical disparity between what CPS students receive versus their counterparts in the rest of the state, and also joined in an alliance with children throughout the state, rural areas, suburban areas, and low-income school districts, who, for different reasons, also suffer under the current funding formula, allowing the state to treat their educations far differently than those in wealthy districts. And we're on the cusp of reform. It's not done yet, but I want to thank everybody who was part of that campaign that has helped lead us to this point. And, you know, there are still some uncertainty for some school districts around the state about how long they can stay open if this stalemate should continue. But I want to make it clear, as the Mayor Emanuel has, that CPS schools will be open on September 5, and they will remain open throughout the school year. As CFO Jenny Bennett noted in her budget presentations, this is because schools must continue their extraordinary academic excellence, that she touched on a few of those criteria. And you may have seen recently the freshman-on-track rates that were announced just yesterday. Students are getting, setting records, and the achievement gap between students of color and their peers is narrowing. Students are making these remarkable gains, even as they are underfunded by the state to the tune of $500 million a year. So with a fair allocation of resources, we know that Chicago schools can compete with anyone. And even as Springfield finally begins to do its part, we hope, it's important that we continue to do our part as well. So I'd like to highlight one component of this budget that has been, will continue to be, a major priority for this administration and this board, which is management efficiencies and stronger financial control, some of which were touched on in the Audit and Finance Committee meeting this morning, just a small sliver of those actions. These reforms include centralizing administrative functions, implementing new procurement strategies, and improving the way we create schedules in our schools that have allowed the district to save in excess of $145 million annually. And more are on the way. These and other decisions have led to millions of dollars being redirected to classrooms, and now more than 97% of staff work is in direct support of schools. These efficiencies, along with the new revenues we've sought for the district in the past two years, have put CPS on a better financial footing than in the past. Although we continue to have much work to do, we strongly support the deal on the table in Springfield and look forward to its fruition and to a very successful school year. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Chief Education Officer, Janice Jackson.
Thank you, Forrest. Again, I want to highlight one point that Forrest made about our excitement around the start of the new school year. It was made clear that CPS would start school on time no matter what, so we just want to remind parents of the importance of attending school on the first day, which this year is Tuesday, September 5. Research is clear that students who attend on the first week are just off to a much better start, so we want to get that out there. The district has taken great efforts to ensure that our students are back in school on September 5, led by Chief Johnson and our FACE Department. We hosted over 13 back-to-school bashes, where over 13,000 students and families came out to celebrate the school year and to drum up some excitement about the next school year. As Forrest pointed out in Jenny in the presentation, we have a lot of exciting data to be proud of. We released our elementary school data earlier this month, the NWEA MAP data. And not to highlight those things, again, we'll do a much more comprehensive scope, I mean, comprehensive view of last year's student performance. But I do want to highlight the fact that for the fifth year in a row, NWEA scores have grew in Chicago public schools. And also to note a remarkable achievement amongst our EL students, in particular one subgroup, where the achievement gap is narrowing by 48% in reading and 28% in math. And we just want to celebrate those remarkable accomplishments. Finally, with regard to exciting data, we released our freshman-on-track numbers yesterday, where over 88% of our students were on track. The University of Chicago's Consortium on School Research has made clear the correlation between freshman-on-track rates, so we're even more encouraged that we will be able to meet our goal of 85% or more students graduating by 2020. What's also encouraging in those numbers is that it's largely driven by performance at our neighborhood schools, and most notably amongst African-American and Latino students. This gives us great encouragement that focusing on the achievement gap is really going to be critical as CPS moves, continues to move to the next level. Finally, we continue to be acknowledged nationally and locally for our student performance. Professor Sean Riordan of Stanford University has highlighted CPS as a national outlier and has encouraged other school districts that are interested in large-scale school transformation to look to Chicago public schools for that level of transformation. So again, we're excited to kick off another school year and continue to post notable gains, but we're also excited to start drilling down and focusing a lot more on those achievement gaps and ensuring that all students and in every neighborhood, people feel that they have a high-quality option. The last announcement that I'd like to make for the board and the public is that today we release the BURGE curriculum. It is a curriculum that will be rolled out in all Chicago public schools and taught to both 8th graders and 10th graders. This is important for a number of reasons. Number one, it acknowledges a very ugly part in Chicago's history, but more importantly, highlights the progress and the path forward. In collaboration with the Chicago Police Department and the CTU, we've created a curriculum that has been piloted in six schools throughout the district and refined as a result. And students will be taught about the past, but the goal here is not just to rehash the past or to highlight some of the experiences that some of our students may have had, either positive or negative, with the Chicago Police Department. But instead, it is to help them make sense out of what happened, so that we don't repeat those past actions, but more importantly, to help them navigate the future. So we're really excited about that. We look to share more about that in the coming weeks. And that concludes the announcements from the education side.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Board members, any questions? Okay, saying that, I'll make a few brief announcements. As always, I encourage people to use our website, which is CPSBOE.org. It's one of the most effective ways that you can contact the board and arrange one-on-one with board members, or have issues in between board meetings that we can respond to. Our goal is always to respond in a substantive way within 48 hours, and I believe we continue to achieve that goal. I have another announcement to make. We will be voting on our budget today, and you heard the budget presentation and you saw the numbers. There's a lot of numbers, and it's fairly complex. This is a huge institution with an operating budget of in the billions of dollars. It would probably be a Fortune 500 company if it was not a public institution. The complexities around running CPS and the Board of Education are frankly enormous, but I want to give some perspective around just our world and ultimately what the board sees as its principal responsibilities. Let me start by acknowledging just some awful, awful things that we see on the news every day, whether YC, ANN, or Fox, or other news stations, or local news. You see examples of bigotry and hatred and just meanness at a level that frankly I never expected to see in this great country of ours, and incidentally, which I don't expect to be the prevailing view, the prevailing voice over the long haul. Then you also see acts of God, nature, doing things that despite our technology and the advancements that mankind has made, you're fairly helpless. I happened to have been in Houston this week, and I was fortunate to be able to leave as the weather turned really bad. But I was on a conference call yesterday with a number of officials in that area because of relationships I have there. And what you see on TV is understating what some of those people are experiencing. Same as if you went back to the awful thing that happened during Katrina in Louisiana and New Orleans. I mean, it was just terrible. But you can't appreciate it from TV. You have to be there to understand it. And of course, our prayers and thoughts go out to all of those folks who are going through this. Now, people who lost their homes, some of the people I was on the phone with are people who are really frankly financially very well off and have the ability to go to other places, maybe they have second homes. But they were telling me devastating stories of folks whose, I mean, their houses disappeared, literally underwater, and you saw some of that on the news channels. But again, you really can't imagine walking through water waist-deep, holding your child or your dog or your possessions, and not frankly knowing where to go. It's just so utterly overwhelming. So, you know, these are the things, some we can control, some we can't, that are part of our daily lives. How that ties in to our budget constraints and our issues here in Chicago are only in the sense that we all try our best, and under very, very difficult circumstances. This budget that we are voting on, it's a difficult budget. And some people will speak today, and rightfully so, and point out issues that they feel have been overlooked, not properly understood, and we need to hear that, and we need to pay attention to it. But it is a budget that is balanced to do all, to provide the best to the most across the Chicago public schools. Dr. Jackson mentioned a new curriculum that she just rolled out today, which is why a few of us are late getting down here, because we had a press conference. We all know that here, not going back a few decades, actually, when the Chicago Police Department and specifically an individual there did some horrific things, tortured people, there's just no question about it. And there's no, there was no recognition of that for a very long time. There has been now, and we are actually teaching, using this as a teaching opportunity, a subject matter opportunity for our kids, for our young boys and girls, not only to tell them what history, that maybe they didn't personally experience, but as part of the Chicago history, but how to react, what to do, how to handle a situation like that. The great thing about it is this was done in conjunction with the Chicago Police Department, and Superintendent Eddie Johnson was in the press conference with us, and I'm pleased with that. I use the term "serve and protect," which you see on all the cars, as you see the Chicago police move around the city. Well, that really is what they're supposed to do. I still believe that most of them do that, maybe even, I think even the vast majority, but you do have incidents which are horrendous. And I think that I applaud CEO Claypool, I applaud Dr. Jackson and all the others that boldly put forth an actual curriculum that's being taught to hundreds of thousands of kids in the Chicago public school system of an episode in our history which was absolutely terrible. And I applaud them with that. Lastly, when you got the budget presentation, from time to time, if those of you that attended meetings in the past, or were at the budget, the Finance Committee hearings this morning, we get a lot of input from you, a lot of guidance on what that budget should reflect, and frankly, how we should go about funding the Chicago public schools. It's our job to listen, and sometimes I don't think you believe we do, but we really do, to your insights. Again, it's very large, very complicated. People question time and time again, why do we borrow as much as we do? And, you know, the explanation is very, it's very simple. When you see the things that happened to us over the years, we're talking about just this past year, when the state, this is not dollars that were in conflict, these were not dollars that were being disputed, these were dollars they admitted they owed, hundreds of millions of dollars, we just don't, they just don't give it to us. Or that the governor using the authority that he has to exercise the veto and remove $215 million from our budget that we fully expected to receive. What does that do? That puts us in a situation in order to continue to keep our schools open, to continue the job we really here for it. job we really here for, to educate hundreds of thousands of young men and young girls and young boys, and to pay our teachers, we borrow, and we have continued to do that. Now, you heard from the presentation today that our deficit has been cut in half. That's through frankly the excellent stewardship of the leadership of the Chicago public schools. And as we go through public participation and you provide guidance and your thoughts on what we should do better, that we will pay attention to, you recognize that the problem we have is at least cut in half. I don't know what's going to happen in Springfield later today, but I do expect that they will take up Senate Bill One as it has been amended. There's, as you've read in the papers, there's a deal on the table now that will result in hundreds of millions of dollars coming to CPS, which does just wonders for us in terms of our financial stability. As Forrest Claypool stated, it does not solve all of our problems, but it puts us on a steady footing in a manner that we have not experienced in probably decades. So it's my hope and expectation that that deal actually goes through. And incidentally, I've talked to more than one of the legislators in Springfield the last couple of days, and some of them were unclear whether, quote, "the Board of Education" and I specifically supported the deal as it exists with some provisions in it that people don't like, including vouchers, which I'm not going to get into now. Those of you who know about it know why you don't like it. But a deal is just that, it's a compromise, and hopefully, a lot of people win, there are very few losers, but frequently, people don't get everything they want. I hope that it goes through today, later today, and I personally strongly endorse it, and I think I speak for the entire board, that we as a body endorse this deal. And with that, I will, I talked so long, I forgot my place. What am I doing next?
Mr. President, I'll proceed with the announcement regarding the next board meeting.
Would you do that, please?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen, at the CPS Loop Office. Advance registration will open at ten-thirty a.m. on Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, and will close on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, at five p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. And if anyone has any questions about the process, please contact the Board Office for our assistance. Thank you.
Okay, let's proceed now. Madam Secretary, please share the details for the next board meeting.
We just did that, so we're on public participation now?
Okay, we didn't rehearse this today. We don't actually ever rehearse. It just shows that even when you do something time and time again, you have days when you love it all. Let's proceed now with the public participation section. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speakers, please listen while I provide directions for public participation. I will call your name and number when it is your turn to speak. When you hear your name, please immediately proceed to the staging area to the left of the podium and check in with Board Office Staff Member Eric. He will be there to assist you. You will be lined up in the right order. When it is your turn to speak, proceed to the podium and state your name. After you state your name, I will then start the two-minute clock, which is visible to all in the audience, and I would also like to note that there is a timer on top of the podium for speakers to see. When there are thirty seconds remaining, the color will turn yellow, and when the two minutes are up, the light will turn to red. Please immediately take your seat when your time is up to allow for the next speaker to begin. Also, for anyone who plans to stand in support of a speaker, please be aware that the only walkway in the boardroom is behind the podium. Therefore, if you would kindly make a single file line and stand as near as the railing as possible, this will still allow people to pass through the area safely. Thank you. So, Mr. President, I can proceed by calling our elected officials first, and I do have Jesse Sharkey in the audience from the CTU with us this morning. If you can, please proceed to the podium, and then after Mr. Sharkey, we will proceed with the speakers list.
President Clark, members of the board, CEO Claypool, Dr. Jackson, welcome back to the school year. On behalf of the twenty-two thousand active members of the CTU, we look forward to seeing students on Tuesday after Labor Day. Our members have started going back into the schools today. Everyone will be back by Wednesday, and, you know, we're proud of the academic progress the district has continued to make, and obviously, that's been the result of a lot of hard work out in the schools, and so we're proud of that. That's tempered by two quick points that I do want to make. First of all, this is the third year in a row that the board has presented the public with what I've been calling a phantom budget. Phantom because it relies on unsecured revenues that have never appeared, and so two years ago, that was to the tune of about four-hundred million dollars. Last year, the tune of about two-hundred million dollars. This year, there's over five-hundred million dollars that are not yet secured. And while I do not hold you responsible for the political impasse that's starving our schools of needed funds, I do hold you responsible for making a virtue out of a necessity. That is, we need to tell the truth about how harmful the cuts have been. So, for example, the contractual bargaining agreements have had pay freezes for each of the last two years. On top of that, we've had furlough days, which have actually cut teacher and staff pay for each of the last two years. We've seen the elimination of PD, which has put our schools in a difficult situation in terms of being fully prepared, in terms of planning instruction and the rest of the work that goes into teaching students. We've closed hundreds of special ed positions. These are not efficiencies. These are harmful cuts and need to be called as such. Speak out about what's right in terms of revenue and the need to seek revenue. We do not yet know, for example, what the political leadership in the city of Chicago, the mayor who's appointed this board, has plans for filling that two-hundred-and-sixty-nine million-dollar hole, and frankly, we need to speak out that vouchers, which are part of this latest school funding bill, are fundamentally devastating to a public school system. This is not just vouchers, it's vouchers plus tax credits, which would mean that if I have a thousand-dollar tax bill, I can give a thousand dollars to a parochial school or private school and only, and then get seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar credit off my taxes, which means, look, you know, there's a lot of things I don't want to fund. I don't want to fund public transportation, I don't want to fund public school, I don't want to fund whatever. I don't have to pay my taxes. It's a crazy idea, and I would urge the board to speak out against that. Finally, quick point, which is the enrollment crisis the board is seeing is particularly acute in the neighborhood schools on South and West Sides. And what the union would call, we're worried about divestment from those neighborhood schools. The CTU CPS collective bargaining agreement has language that says that we should be meeting to talk about what we're doing to address that. We would very much like to start those meetings. And secondly, we're anxious about the new online process, high school application process, CPS GO. We think that in the context of declining enrollments, the potential for closing of those schools, we think it's critical that you share the exact criteria and the instructions that you gave to your vendor about how to design that online program. I'd like to see that, the exact instructions the vendor got. And then in addition to that, we'd like to see the algorithm and program itself. I understand from people who program these things that that's, you're probably not going to be able to share that as proprietary, people could game it. That's okay, but what we'd like to see then would be how that thing be peer-reviewed. If we could mutually agree on some programmers that could look at that, we want to see CPS GO because we think in the context of closing schools and declining enrollment, that if there isn't confidence in that program, it massively undermines it. I'd rather not have to come out here and denounce CPS GO. I'd like to see really that it is what it purports to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Jesse, as you walk away, it occurs to me that, and I'm not looking for a back-and-forth, I just want to make a very short observation. I think we all, whether, you know, the CTU, the Board, CPS, we all want one thing in common, we want adequate funding. SB One, as modified, it's a huge step in that direction. It has a component that I know you very strongly oppose, and that's, I just, again, I just use the term vouchers. I believe the value of that is about, I'm not taking issue with the tax, with the tax component in what you described, I believe the total amount of that is somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-five million dollars. I cannot in my own mind balance seventy-five million dollars against four-hundred-and-fifty million that CPS would benefit from. Whether I agree or disagree with the vouchers, you guys are doing an excellent job lobbying against that component, but frankly, it puts the whole deal in jeopardy. That's your right. You may feel, in fact, it's your obligation, but when I balance four-hundred-and-fifty million dollars versus seventy-five million, then maybe I don't like the way that spend is going, and I'm not saying I do or I don't, I land on the side of the four-hundred-and-fifty million that goes to the Chicago public schools. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, we'll proceed with the speakers list, and our first speaker will be Speaker number one, please, Pam Whitmer, and then we'll have the following speakers. Speaker number two, Nikita Brar. Speaker number eight, Sharice Riley. Speaker sixteen, Sarah Bush. Speaker nineteen, Mariah Crawford. Please state your name.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Pam Whitmer. I'm the Senior Policy Manager at the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. Each year, charter public schools are allowed to request changes to their contract through an amendment process. I'm here today to encourage you to approve the amendments to those charter agreements that are listed in the board agenda. Some of these modest changes before you reflect the need for space and high-quality schools across the city. As you'll hear today, and as you probably already heard from the recordings of the public hearings on these issues, parents, grandparents, teachers, and students are asking for these changes. Families are choosing options that are the best for their children, and we hope that you will look beyond politics to approve these modifications to these high-quality charter schools contracts. As always, we recognize that the budget interacts with a few of these amendments, and in June, it was mentioned that it was difficult to approve the amendments while the budget was not final and while the district was still waiting on the outcome in Springfield. However, regardless of whatever happens in Springfield today, and the fact that the vote on these amendments was delayed four months, we are thankful that you're taking up these matters today. That said, in the future, we strongly encourage you to implement and follow through on systems that ensure predictability for the sake of our students, families, and schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitmer. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Nikita Brar. I'm here on behalf of Chicagoans United for Equity, which is a group of community members who are working on promoting integration throughout Chicago. I'm here to address the CPS proposal to close National Teachers Academy in response to complaints that the South Loop does not have a high school. The South Loop has a high school. It is Phillips Academy where I serve on the local school council. Phillips has seen tremendous gains over the last few years, leading to Dr. Jackson stating recently that some of the best teaching she's seen in the city is happening at Phillips. But no academic accolades will ever be enough for a small group of South Loop residents who call Phillips not a viable option. How do I know this? Because the same parents have long rejected National Teachers Academy as an elementary school, saying publicly at LSC meetings that NTA is also not a viable option. NTA and Phillips are very different schools with very different histories, different academic rankings and programs, but there is one thing that they have in common. They are both over eighty percent African-American, and they are both over eighty percent low-income. The small group of South Loop voices that have initiated this plan for a gerrymandered high school that has a more acceptable, palatable racial mix are the same voices who call both NTA and Phillips not a viable option for their children. These are the same voices who in early 2000s advocated for the redlining of low-income African-American children to be ousted from their home, which at the time was South Loop Elementary. Now they are asking to again redline students out of their home, National Teachers Academy, because they feel that it would be better served for the entire community to be racially integrated into a lower proportion of low-income students, a lower proportion of African-American students, and therefore giving themselves an excuse to not send their children to Phillips Academy. Now, CPS released on Friday that this was an attempt to move this plan forward was to right a wrong from the past, but it's first important to look at the racial-
Ms. Brar, can you please conclude?
I'll try. If CPS is really trying to right the wrongs from the past, I would call on you to implement a racial equity analysis, which is a tool that has been used across the country to promote integration. Dr. Jackson, you said at last month's board meeting that you support that, and we call on the board to implement that racial equity analysis and without that, that this plan be halted and immediately rejected.
Thank you, Ms. Brar. Our next speaker, please, Sharice Riley.
My name is Sharice Riley, and I'm here to speak on behalf of NTA. Against the conversion of the school becoming a high school. I think NTA is a great school. My children come home teaching me new methods of what they're learning in school, and also my children are going to school with a diversity of people. I wasn't able to go to school with other nationalities as far as grammar school and high school, so by the time I made the college, I was very ignorant on the diversity, so my eyes were open when I got to college. So I would love for NTA to stay a public school because of the diversity. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Our next speaker, please, Sarah Bush.
Hello, my name is Sarah Bush. I'm a graduate of the Chicago Public Schools and a mother to two daughters who attend National Teachers Academy. You have a statement for my daughter, Susanna. If this were just about our family, I would talk about how this is the second school closure in five years that's affected us and how disruptive that is. But when I was working in NTA's new native plant garden yesterday, I realized it's more important to tell you about the community that you'd be ruining by closing this extraordinary school. When you destroy schools, and let's be clear, that's what's happening here. When you destroy schools, you destroy communities. So I'll tell you about what my family, but this also the city will lose when you close NTA. We will lose a dedicated group of teachers and staff, many of whom know both of my daughters by name. I very much doubt that we'll find that kind of personal touch at the nineteen-hundred-student-three campus, South Loop campus. We will lose NTA's culture, which is committed to always pushing yourself and others to be the very best, but just as important, it is committed to social justice. That's reflected in the tireless work put forward to improve academic outcomes for students across the school community and the successful implementation of a restorative justice program that has dramatically reduced suspension rates. And then we'll lose the community itself. Even if my children stay at NTA, they'll never be the big eighth graders who get to teach the kindergarteners math. They'll be an afterthought in a school that's in transition. When I talk to my friends with students outside of CPS, they're all shocked at our story. They shake their heads as if to say, well, this is why we would never send our children to Chicago public schools. This doesn't happen to well-off students in this district either. Parents at Blaine or Coonley would be in here gun blazing if you tried to touch their precious schools. But as you know, school closings are an all-too-familiar tale for black and brown children across the city. These closures are disruptive, and you would not want it for your children or your grandchildren. My children deserve better, the children of NTA deserve better, and the children in Chicago deserve better. I urge you to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. And our next speaker, please, Mariah Crawford. Last call. Moving on to the next speaker then, Latasha Watkins, followed by Speaker forty-six, Sean Everhart, forty-seven, Corey Harris, forty-eight, David Shapiro, and fifty-nine, Lorena Aguilar.
My name is Latasha Watkins, and I'm a mom to two boys who call NTA home. One of them is a rising set-first grader, the other is in preschool, but NTA is where he's going. That's his home in terms, in his own terms. And I have a third, who I hope will be a proud future Eagle. I'm here to ask the Board of Education to separate politics from my children's education. In June, Dr. Jackson told the DNA info reporter that the plan to close NTA was a financial decision, saying, "We don't have the additional dollars to build a brand-new high school every time there is a lack of quality seats in the area." Emphasis on quality seats. It's our responsibility to look at our portfolio of schools with creativity and sometimes sacrifice to create some balance. The sacrifice she's referring to is a sacrifice that my children would have to give up, a school that they love, so that South Loop residents who do not want to send their children to Phillips Academy, or to NTA for that matter, can have a satisfactory safety school in case they don't get into the selective enrollment process or program. You are asking us to believe that something born out of the mayor's self-interest is good for our children. Do not, do not ask me to sacrifice my children's future so that Mayor Emanuel can court voters in a wealthy enclave in the South Loop community. Do not pretend that this is about integration when PDNA, the community group that came up with this plan, started by saying Phillips is our high school, doesn't work. None of our people will send their kids there. Face it, that is a direct quote from John Jacoby, I believe. We're here to let you know that we've played by your rules, we've done what we needed to to get our children into this school, we've entertained community forums, we've collected over twelve-hundred signatures on our petition, we've brought out hundreds of supporters at town hall meetings and board meetings, and you see the- and you see the support that is in the packet that has been handed to you. And none of that has influenced a change, a change in terms of keeping NTA as it is currently.
Ms. Watkins, can you please conclude?
I sure will. Because this has never been about listening to our community. It was always about politics. So moving forward, we will be fighting politics with politics, and we will not stop. Prove to us that the Board of Education that you work for our kids, not for Mayor Emanuel's reelection fund, show us that you're capable of acting independently of his authority and doing what's right for our children. Please do your research yourself. Look at the results for NTA in comparison to kids in other charter schools and other CPS schools.
Ms. Watkins-
And I encourage you to make a decision based on your own principles that are embodied by you and those that are upstairs on that entryway wall.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, Sean Everhart. Last call. Corey Harris.
Good morning, Board. My name is Corey Harris. I have four children currently enrolled in NTA. I come here speaking for NTA. If you want to curb some of the violence in our community, low-income African-American community, educate our kids, empower them with the knowledge that they can be somebody else. Taking this school away from them, only, we are the only school in our district that is a level-one-plus school. Every other school are level threes. Keep empowering us to become an economic resource that we can bring back to our community. I left my, I left my paper that I was saying, so right now I'm just going off the top, off the top of my head. So again, I apologize for that, but we need this school because this school has empowered a lot of kids in our community. And it has, the crime in our community is a substantial load for right now. If we take this away, we, we are only inciting more disruption in our community. Help us, help our community with keeping this school for us. I don't know, like right now I'm a little, anyway, but I forgot everything I wanted to say.
That's all right. You're doing better than I did earlier today. Just keep at it.
You know, we was, you know, with Alderman Pat Dow, PDA, PDA, PDNA, we wasn't, our community, low African-American community, wasn't involved in this conversation about this school. We found out at the last morning when the decision was already made. So soon as we found out, we came and we rallied together to show the support for the school.
Mr. Harris.
This is the only school that has, I've been in, where every student, I mean, every teacher, every security knew every student in this school, first and last name. So on that, you know, my time is up. I'd just like to say thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And our next speaker, please, David Shapiro.
Good morning. I'm the proud father of a student at National Teachers Academy who will be a first grader next year. I moved to the area to be closer to my son's school because I concluded that it was the best school in the city of Chicago. He had the scores to get into Edison and Coonley. His mother and I toured those schools and decided that National Teachers Academy was the model that we wanted for our son because of the way that it doesn't separate out the regional gifted center from the rest of the school, the way that it's one united school community racially, socio-economically, et cetera. And so I'm absolutely shocked and outraged that CPS has proposed to shut down what I believe is the best elementary school in Chicago. Show me the education policy textbook that says, "Let's find the schools with the most supportive culture, high scores, combined with a high eighty percent low-income, eighty percent African-American student body. Let's find those schools and let's shut those schools down." I think you'll search in vain for any sort of evidence-based basis for a proposal of this nature. I think it's particularly ironic and painful that this proposal is going forward at the same time that CPS is playing lip service to the idea of inclusion by instituting a curriculum based on John Birch. I'm a civil rights lawyer. I sue people like John Birch, and I can tell you that it's places like National Teachers Academy that build the culture and the foundation to make sure that there are no future John Burges. And it is so insulting to hear this referred to as an integration, to hear that great word, "integration," that word-
Mr. Shapiro.
I'll finish, that has inspired struggle and brought forth justice. And to see it cheapened and defiled as a descriptor for what this proposal is, we have words like conquest, rape, and colonization for what this proposal is, and it should be voted down. Thank you.
And our next speaker, Mr. President, is Lorena Aguilar, followed by Speaker twenty-nine, Elizabeth Van Upstel, please.
My name, my name is Lorena Aguilar, and I'm currently a student at National Teachers Academy. And I'm here today to discuss the issue of turning into, NTA into a high school. As an almost graduate at National Teachers Academy, it pains me to hear that such a wonderful school may be closed down. As a young girl, I was growing up in a very violent part of Chicago, and only as a kindergarten student, I was forced to move schools due to my school dealing with the poverty of teachers. As I started my new years at NTA, over time I've grown many unbreakable friendships that simply cannot be found at any other school. NTA itself is like another home for students and cannot be replaced. As a soon-to-be eighth grader, I am just now starting to realize how the system and world works, and from what I am seeing, the mayor and CPS central offices are trying to take our students and close our school without a second thought about, about how it will affect and impact students physically and emotionally. Thank you. That'll be all for my speech.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. And our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Van Upstel. I'm a proud NTA mom. I'm also a pediatrician and I teach at a medical school here in Chicago. And there's two simple principles in medicine that I think about whenever I make an important decision that may affect a children's life. One, is it evidence-based, and two, is it ethical? So when I think about the conversion of NTA, I do not think that it is evidence-based for many reasons that we've tried to tell you. One, it creates a ginormous school of eighteen hundred students, and studies have shown over and over that this decreases school performance. There's the traffic problems, the walking, walking distance, the false hope in giving multiple communities a chance at a school that might fit a thousand students max. The evidence also doesn't show that equity in funding has been there in CPS, and I think that this is a particular decision that does not support equity. What it does show and what we'll hear more from is that the decision was made to appease politicians and for the wealthy, and it ignored the vulnerable children that are part of NTA. Dr. Jackson, Mr. Claypool, I greatly do respect your positions, but I am honestly very hurt. And I think more than me in my pasty white face, I, I don't speak just for myself and my privilege. We are very hurt by your statement that this is wronging a right. And I'll tell you why. I have been spending hours upon hours just calling parents, people I don't even know, saying, "What do you think of the CPS proposal?" And every single person I called said, "No." And so how can you say that this is righting a wrong? Our kids have been hurt, historically hurt by CPS decisions, by politics, by the mayor, but you can't say it's righting a wrong when our kids don't want to go to South Loop Elementary. They want to keep their community. This is a community that we have built. And so though it breaks my heart and it brings me to tears at night, I won't give up hope because I think-
Ms. Van Upstel, can you please conclude?
Yes. Do I get seconds off for crying? Take them back. I think this is a decision a lot about classism, but I think that we and you as a board need to stand up for true class, for integrity, and for our children, and not for filthy elite politicians. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our next speaker will be Speaker number twenty-four, Aaron Sanders, followed by Speaker number three, please, Sibyl Suwong. We will then have Speaker thirty-seven, Jeffrey Wu, followed by Speaker number fifty-two, Thong Phan, and then Speaker number ten, Ivory Lu.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Jackson, Mr. Claypool left. My name's Aaron Sanders, and I am the parent of two children attending National Teachers Academy. I'm also here to talk to you about similar things that you've already heard, but very specifically about the process of the decision-making within our city government and schools when it is exclusive to the powerful and the connected. And finally, that's, that it's impact on ordinary families, such as my own and everyone you see here. On Friday, we received notice that CPS would be moving forward to recommend the closure of National Teachers Academy. We were told that this decision was not made lightly and that our input was heard, but we at NTA were not surprised at this announcement because we had been reading internal communications between our government leaders, and we knew that they always believed that this plan was, as someone had said once, "A done deal." On April fourth, two thousand fifteen, Mayor Emanuel attended an Easter egg roll hosted by the Prairie District Neighborhood Alliance, who you've heard about just a few minutes ago, a local neighborhood group that, among other things, has membership dues of up to twenty-five hundred dollars per person per year. Mayor Emanuel was there at the request of Alderman Pat Dow, and he used his opportunity to tout his fifty-five million TIF investment for a new hotel and a new DePaul stadium. PDNA president and South Loop Realtor Tina Feldstein warmly introduced the mayor, which was very strange because she'd been the loudest critic of the DePaul stadium deal just a few minutes, a few months prior. Ten days after this event, Alderman Dow sent off an email to Barbara Bird Bennett, former CEO. To pass along Mayor Emanuel's marching orders, Dow confirmed that the mayor spoke to Tina at that Easter egg roll and promised Tina directly that National Teachers Academy would become a new neighborhood high school. Once again, this is two years ago, two thousand fifteen. We also have evidence that in the last three months CPS staff, Alderman Dow, PDNA have been working in lockstep to push forward this plan, and no matter how many logical arguments-
Mr. Sanders.
...we parents have showed for our school and how it deserves to exist. And yet here we are now after wasting our time through three sham town hall meetings, wasting everyone's time here. CPS has yet to talk to the NTA community. Instead, it looks at us as chess pieces to move around as they please. So at least please do us the courtesy of being honest. Let us stop pretending that this was a CPS-led plan. It wasn't. We know this proposal was born from an unholy alliance between a real estate agent obsessed with local property values, an Alderman pandering to a small group of wealthy white residents, and a mayor who wanted to get his TIF project approved, no matter the cost. We are counting on you, the Board, to swiftly reject this plan. And in the future, before any proposed school construction or closure, we are calling for an unbiased racial equity analysis because we cannot risk any other community enduring the corrupt process that has led us to where we are today. Unfortunately, folks, we live in an age of cynicism.
Mr. Sanders, thank you.
And that age of cynicism is something that even our president says the system is rigged. Please do everyone the courtesy of voting down this plan and coming up with something better. I leave you the twelve hundred petitions that were mentioned by a previous speaker.
Our next speaker, please, Sibyl Wong.
My name is Sibyl Wong and, okay, thank you. I am a mother of three that went through the Chicago Public School, and also my husband went through the Chicago Public School too. And we are, we are, we are working, you know, with the Chinese community around the neighborhood. And we are looking for the, waiting, waiting for the high school on our own for, I could say, more, more than forty years. You know, we are working with all those regular students, immigrant students, children and family that we are serving, that they are having a very difficult time to getting their own high school, getting to their own high school, because if they do not get into those so-called selective prep, they, they will be having a very hard time to go into all different schools that scatter around. So we are working, we are looking, we are waiting for a high school of our own. It's not because that we are trying to take people high, people's school, we are just want to accept whatever CPS available to us. Look at all the students waiting for, to speak, and they had the heart that, you know, just want their own school. So listen to us too, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Wong. And our next speaker, please, Jeffrey Wu. Wu?
Al.
Wu, thank you.
Hello, Chicago Board of Education. My name is Jeffrey Al. I'm a senior at Curie High School. I was born and raised in Chinatown on Tan Court and also attended Haynes Elementary School before moving to Brighton Park after fifth grade. Four years ago, I did not get accepted to any selective enrollment schools that I applied to. I was lucky enough to live close to two neighborhood public high schools near me. Those schools are Curie and Kelly High School. The commute to either of those high schools are no longer than ten minutes by bus from my house. I felt like I had good choices despite not getting into a selective enrollment school. While in high school, I feel like I have been disconnected from my own Chinese culture. During my three years of high school, I have not had the opportunity to share my cultural experiences with others who can relate and celebrate and appreciate my heritage and language. Although I was able to learn from my Latin classmates, I did not feel like I had many opportunities to share my own. My sister attended Whitney Young, and she had the opportunity to join an Asian-American club where there was a sizable student population who were racially Asian or had appreciation for Asian culture and arts. Even though I was not accepted, I still had hoped my own high school would still offer similar opportunities where I can find people with similar experiences who also want to express their culture as well. Unfortunately, I, I never had the opportunity to show and express who I am with others who can relate without being ashamed. There is not, this is not experience, an experience I would like anyone to have. That is why I supported high school that serves Haynes, Ward, Healy, and other nearby schools like Armour, Holden, and McLennan. I want upcoming high schools to be able to feel safe in the same atmosphere and not only experience new cultures, but be able to experience their own at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please, Thong Phan.
Hello, my name is Thong Phan, and I am an immigrant product of CPS. I am also a community organizer with the Coalition for a Better Chinese American Community. Chinatown has been advocating for a high school for over forty years. We had hope when we first testified at the CPS supplemental capital budget hearing in December for the seventy-five million dollar brand-new school. Although we understand that we are beneficiaries of the current NTA high school proposal, residents in the greater Chinatown area still have concerns about this plan and its impact on the near-south side. Last Friday, CPS announced that the plan to convert NTA into a neighborhood high school serving the near-south side communities would move forward. However, the attendance boundaries have not been announced for this potential high school nor the true capacity. In previous town halls, the capacity of eleven hundred was discussed, leaving each class to have only two hundred seventy-five students. From data that we have collected, only one-third of graduates from Haynes, Healy, and Ward attend selective enrollment schools. That leaves seventy percent of the close to three hundred students choosing between citywide charter, private, and non-neighborhood public schools. Chinese families are moving west beyond Armour Square and Bridgeport. Other elementary schools in Bridgeport like Armour, Holden, and McLennan also need support. If this plan goes through with the appropriate stakeholders fully engaged and involved, Chicago must also consider long-term, comprehensive citywide planning for all neighborhoods to best serve all students in an equitable, equitable manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phan. And our next speaker, please, Ivory Lau, followed by Manor Wiley, and then we'll have Mr. Simon Shu.
My name is Ivory Lau, and I'm an incoming freshman of Lang Technic College Prep High School and a graduate of James Ward Elementary School. I was raised near Chinatown along with my two older brothers and parents of whom were immigrants. Growing up, I had a loving family who shared their cultural Chinese traditions and instilled the ideas of hard work and importance of education. My brothers attended Whitney M. Young Magnet High School where the perception was that it was a Golden Standard school. There was a lot of pressure for me because I was afraid that if I didn't go to this school, I would disappoint everyone. Plus, I heard many great things about Whitney, so I still want to go there. When the time came for me to apply for high schools, I ranked Whitney Young number one. I did everything I had to do for the selective enrollment application. A few months later, my results were emailed. I wasn't accepted. I was afraid to disappoint my mother. She wanted me to go to Whitney as badly as I wanted to, but that's what I thought. She told me, she told me that she knew I tried my best, and as long as I did, she was happy. As I start high school in a week, ten miles away from my home, I know it will be a long road with the four years ahead. I will have to walk to the orange line and transfer to the bus, or walk to the red and transfer to the brown. My total commute one way is over an hour with, with either commutes. I am afraid that it will deter me from extracurriculars or sports because I won't have time to finish my homework or study for exams. I do not want future generations- I do not want future generations to undergo the stress of finding a good school and having to travel far distances for one. Therefore, I support a neighborhood high school that serves my peers at Ward, Healy, Haynes, and other Bridgeport schools such as Armour, Holden, and McLennan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. And our next speaker, please. Manor Wiley.
Good afternoon, President Clark and board members. Thank you for allowing me to be here to voice my opinion on the transformation of the National Teacher Academy from an elementary school to a neighborhood high school. First, I'd like to tell the board that I am 100% favor of this plan. I appreciate that the district has allowed the plan to evolve after many means with parent, with the parents and community of NTA. However, I would like to make recommendation and ask that the board support a community agreement plan that has given the parents community assurance that their concern will be addressed. First, I would like for the board to consider that every child that was affected by the closing of Harrah Icky's home has a grandpa, grandfather clause into South Loop or NTA. Second, please ensure that the community members are given an opportunity for employment when building the new South Loop building and reviving the new NTA high school. Third, the health clinic located in NTA must continue at NTA for the benefit of the whole community. Four, transportation service must be considered for NTA family that now have to travel further than what they did before. Fifth, CPS or the city must provide crossing guards so that all children, both NTA and South Loop as well as Long Grove, are crossing the street safely. And add another piece, the safe patches. Six, please ensure that the park district will continue to provide before and after school program at affordable rate. Seven.
Ms. Wiley.
Okay. Please allow me to participate on the steering committee that will work on the transformation plan. Finally, as we go through this difficult process, please note that you have my full support to ensure all of our affected children will receive the education they deserve from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. And our next speaker, please, Mr. Shu.
Hi, my name is Simon Shu from Robert Healy, LSE member. Okay, today they say the, my two daughter go to Jones. He's dead, me is not that lucky. I'm gonna have to travel one and a half hour one way from my place to the north side for the high school. And then if I save those hour, I can do more homework, stay with my parents, or play video game, okay? But the other things like on the, on the Healy School within three mile distance, we have 500 students graduate, go to high school. We cannot find the closest one. The Jones is closest one, but the thing is that you have to be smart to get in, okay? And then I don't know about why the NTA, you guys want to transfer to the high school. Before, the NTA is for the teacher. Now, the washroom is adult washroom. And then now, elementary school, now go back to the kid washroom. Now, you can convert the kid washroom back to high school washroom. Why, why have to spend that much money to do it? Why don't you just build a new one for the high school, neighborhood high school instead of just say, you keep money to changing it? And then the other thing is like, right now, you think about 12-years-old kid with the 16-years-old kid together. I know you're in a different building, but you think it's safety, just like, and then just say, assume, if you, if you, if you think about, you have a gun locked to the other door, the kid won't get into it. But for a secure reason, then why you have a 12 or 16-years-old on the area? I think I have enough time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shu. Mr. President, our next group of speakers will be from Kip Bloom and their designated speakers are Speaker Number Five, please, Denise Brown, and Speaker 22, Christopher Young. And then we have the group from Chicago Collegiate Charter School and their designated speakers will be Speaker Number Six, Brandy Stanton, and Speaker 42, please, Jennifer Riggins.
Before this group starts, Dr. Jackson, there's so much, I think in some cases confusion around NTA and, and the high school being under discussion. Is there any clarity that you would like to add to the two groups that spoke?
Yes, thank you, President Clark. I think that the purpose of today, as well as the community meetings we've had before, is to continue to listen. I don't have any direct responses. I think people have, on both sides of this debate, raised some critical issues. One thing that I do think is important to note is that the district made the announcement and our intentions clear and public early on. People may be reminded that the requirement is to do that by December 1st, but we felt strongly, because this is such a complicated issue, that the district should be transparent about what we recommend and what we think is the best course of action to allow for the type of debate and discourse that we're hearing in here today. So I'm really just here to listen, as well as everybody else who's involved in making this decision. And again, we thought that it was important to say what our intentions were early on and to not make that clear so that we can have the kind of discussions that we've had. And the last thing I'll say is that we've heard a lot of good things. The plan was modified as a result of community engagement. Our initial plan was to start in 2018 and to do kind of a big bang merger, but after going to the community meetings and hearing some of the concerns, we pushed that delivery date back to fall of 2019 that would allow for a transition. So if you are a second grader, starting September 5th at NTA, you could stay at NTA throughout your elementary school career as well as your high school career. And we believe many families will choose to do that because of, you know, all the great things you've heard about the school. So we have been listening to the community and we will continue to do that. And again, I just want to make clear that we made our intentions clear upfront so that we can have the kind of discussions that we're having today.
Dr. Jackson, Frank just stepped away from it. So I just wrote down three questions that I was hoping, not today, but hoping that over the course of the next couple of months where you're going through the rest of the process. And the three, they all came from the first group, which I wish they were here to hear it, because then we hear the other side from the, the next couple of groups. So one was this need for the racial equity analysis. Second is, why people feel like we're gonna lose all these dedicated and successful teachers from NTA? And then the third piece would be, this concerns about this, the size of the revised or the new South Loop Elementary School after the construction's done. And maybe that's comparison to other schools of similar, that would be of similar size today and, and how their performances. So just wrap that into the other things and, that's not a, there's no time commitment on your part, just fit it into other reviews you take us through periodically.
Yes, I will. And just, I do want to add this because you raised one good issue around the teachers. We've made clear at those public meetings, as well as in our conversations with CTU, that this is not a merger that is about school quality. We agree that NTA is a fantastic school, so our goal is for teachers to follow the students throughout this transition. So this is not about teachers losing their jobs. We think the teachers at NTA, as well as South Loop, have been doing a phenomenal job and we don't want to do anything to disrupt that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Furlong. Vice President Guzman, I'll proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. So the next speaker, please, Speaker Five, Denise Brown.
Good morning. I'm here for the Kip Bloom expansion. My name is Denise Brown. When I think about Kip Bloom College Prep and our motto, team and family, I think about three of my grandchildren who came to live with me because they needed a family and I needed a team. Kip found us in a park at a baseball game that my kids played in. I needed a school for two fifth graders and a sixth-grade student. Kip was there for us. In the beginning, I did not know if they could help, and I expressed that to the assistant principal and another teacher who came to our home to introduce us to Kip and what we could expect from this school. I thought, okay, let's just see. I prayed and I just did not know how they were gonna be able to reach my kids. Kip staff told me that, that day, that they were not going to give up on my children and whatever they needed to do, they were going to do just that. It was an emotional time for all of us. We all had to make adjustments and they needed stability, motivation, encouragement, love, and academics. It happened. It happened at Kip Bloom. Kip Chicago, team and family, they cared as much about my children succeeding as I did. At a time in their lives when they were unsure about many legitimate concerns, Kip wrapped their arms around me and my children and they are stronger and wiser today. They love school. They love Kip Bloom College Prep. They love learning. They love their teachers, their classmates. My grandchildren's story is not unique, but it's their story. There are so many children with, with very similar stories in our community that need a team and family. Please don't tell me it can't be done. Please don't say it's too late.
Ms. Brown, can you please conclude?
Yes. My grandchildren are the living witnesses. They are all three on the honor roll and have never missed a day of school in three years. I thank you so much for the expansion of Kip Bloom.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And our next speaker, please, Christopher Young.
Yes, Christopher Young. I was here just to talk about my son. Because of Kip, my son is attending East Side Chicago Prep in Palo Alto, California, and he has a massive number of classes. Before he went to Kip, he had no idea of what he wanted to do with his life and he's very nonchalant about school. But because of Kip and Kip understanding of the fact that you have to prepare your kid for learning experience mentally before you could begin to teach it by teaching them things like not giving up, time management, being focused, teamwork, helping his fellow student. Christopher, everything that he does is about goals, objectives, all his tasks that he does in school, goals, objectives. They doubled his classes. He went to a transitional program over the summer where he only had three classes. Now they've doubled his classes to six classes. He has two advanced algebra classes, a physics class, a science class. Before then, I could never imagine him attending such a hard course, a hard course of study. But since Kip has taught him how to organize his time, taught him how to not give up, taught him how to establish positive relationships, taught him how to manipulate his time, taught him how to value his education, okay? Because of that, he has numerous things that he's able and capable of doing. He's self-actualized. He knows what he can does and does it. When I ask him how he's doing at East Side Chicago, East Side Prep in Palo Alto, he always tells me, "It's hard, Dad, it's hard, but I can make it. I know I can make it. I want to be a mechanical engineer." That could change at 14, but it's out there and my son has dreams. And because of Kip, he has those dreams. Because Kip understands that success is that old-school adage, proper preparation at the point of opportunity. That's what Kip does and that's why I love Kip. Thank you.
Well, what's your name, sir?
Christopher Young.
Young Senior.
Well, sir, your, your son is very, very, very fortunate to have you as a father.
Oh, thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Brandy Stanton, followed by Jennifer Riggins.
Good morning. My name is Brandy Stanton. I'm here to speak on behalf of my son, Quinton Lofton, who began his first day of sixth grade in his third year at Chicago Collegiate Charter School. My son, my son started at CPS in first grade at Jesse Owens, the neighborhood school. In his third year there, when he was in third grade, he had three classroom teachers and three classroom assistants in one academic year. Unfortunately, I just couldn't pick up and move to a better neighborhood that had better neighborhood schools. So I tested him for a few selective enrollment in regional gifted centers. Unfortunately, his scores weren't competitive, so I was resigned to the fact that he would have to continue on at the neighborhood school. I never attended the neighborhood school in, in that community, the same, same place where we live. I went to Poe Classical, then I went to the seventh, eighth grade program at Morgan Park and then I graduated from Morgan Park High School in 97. So I was kind of anxious about what I would do with my son when he went to fourth grade. So I was on Facebook and I'm scrolling and I found an app for Chicago Collegiate Charter School and I clicked the link to the site. I called the number provided. The founder and executive director of the school answered the phone. We talked, I hung up, I went online and I applied, and that's how I got to CCCS. Now, this is why we're still here. This is our third year. The philosophy that the school says that college preparation begins in middle school was very profound to me. Their vision that students to go to college of their choice and graduate. We hear about schools saying, "Oh, we have 100% graduation rate." "Oh, 100% of our students get accepted to college." Well, I was more impressed by the fact that they want their students to not only go to college, but complete college. I'm impressed by their core values, excellent, pride, grit, courage, zest. That's all demonstrated in their academic programming. I have a five-year-old. He'll be starting kindergarten this fall and I so wish that Chicago Collegiate had the early childhood K through three component.
Ms. Stanton, can you please conclude?
So when it comes down to pipeline, please say yes to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker, please, Jennifer Riggins. Before she begins, I'd like to call some next speakers, please. Speaker Seven, Martin Ritter, followed by Speaker Number Nine, Chris Bayrend. Please proceed.
Yes, hello, my name is Jennifer Riggins. I'm also a parent of children, three children, at Chicago Collegic. This is our second year at Chicago Collegic and I love it. In our area, which is the Roslyn area, we have about five schools and they all overcrowded. There's too many kids in the classrooms for our children to get a proper education and this is in a black community. Chicago Collegic is a wonderful school. It's a, it's a smaller school. The class sizes are nice sizes. They teach our kids technology, which in the Chicago Public School, they don't even give our kids books. They give them handouts, which is no way to research the work. They just give them work and they supposed to go home and complete the work. At Chicago Collegic, it's more of a hands-on. They have the teacher's personal cell phone number when it's something they don't understand. They have computers, laptops, which is opening their eyes and brightening their horizons to technology, which is something they gonna need in the future. The teachers are great. The school is, I don't have to worry about my kids getting bullied. I don't have to worry about them suffering from all type of other issues that goes on in the black community. It's just a nice school. I mean, it's just, all the, school is, the schools in our area, they, they not good schools. Even with the high school, I didn't even apply for my children a high school because I'm very for Chicago Collegic expanding the high school, which is, I got nephews, which I recommend it because in our area, we don't have good schools. We have Curtis, it's not a good school. When I first moved to Chicago, I went and looked at the school, the police was out there. You know, all African-American kids, they not rowdy and crazy. They want an education. We want to teach our kids and we feel like our kids do deserve a education and a proper education at that. We don't want our children bullied. We don't want our children to have to dodge bullets and crawl home crying because of issues at school. We, we really would like our kids to stay at Chicago Collegic from kindergarten to 12th grade because it's a wonderful school. I'm so for the expansion of Chicago Collegic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggins. And our next speaker, please.
Before our next speaker speaks, Dr. Jackson, I'm frankly not aware of schools where kids don't get books. That statement was just made. I have to believe there was some misunderstanding there.
Yeah, those are all individual school decisions, but I don't disagree that there are resource inequities across the district and that may be what she's pointing out. But just to explain, students, schools are given money based on student-based budgeting and those decisions are made by principals. I will say with the recent budget crisis, I know that it's probably been difficult for a lot of principals to replace old books because of just fewer dollars for extra things outside of teachers. So I can't speak to the specifics of any of those schools that the last speaker highlighted, but I don't deny some of the inequities that she was talking about.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Good morning or good afternoon. My name is Martin Ritter. On June 20th, without warning and without reason, Chicago Public Schools terminated 38 Head Start Resource Assistance, the same day that their superior told them that they were doing a better job than ever. 99% of these employees are women of color. These are women who are head of households. Many are CPS graduates. Many are City College graduates. Many have children in CPS and grandchildren in CPS. These employees serve the most at-risk pre-K kindergarten- These employees serve the most at-risk pre-K kindergarten and first-grade families in the CPS system. They comforted them when trauma occurred. They transported them to school when their parents could not, and more. The outcomes of these employees are immeasurable. CPS did them and its entire district a horrible disservice. We need these people working in CPS. We need to have these people serving young people. Dr. Jackson, at the end of the budget hearing a couple of days ago, you said that you were interested. And I'm asking on behalf of the Chicago Teachers Union and the 38 Head Start Resource Assistance, will you set a date with your assistants to sit down with them, to talk about what is a transition plan for them to possibly other paraprofessional jobs? Or to replace the Head Start Assistants in the district and have them working again full-time to serve these at-risk pre-K and kindergarten students and their families?
Yes. Matt Lyons, who I think stepped out, is going to be working with Joe Moriarty to contact CTU on just that issue, so we'll be in touch.
This is a great development. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. And our next speaker, please. As he approaches the microphone, we will then have the designated speakers for CICS, Mr. President, and I will call speaker number 12, Sibylle Simgill. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Speaker 21, Alejandro Vega, and speaker 28, Edith Prado. Please proceed.
Hi there. I'm Chris Bayron, President of Chicago Act, Union for Charter Teachers in Chicago. And President Clark, hello, everyone. Good morning. Good afternoon now, is it quite? Anyway, President Clark, I heard you mention that you didn't know about schools that didn't have books. And I can tell you that my school, Latino Youth High School, when I started in 2009, there were no new books. There were no computers for classroom use. The internet was off and down, and the photocopier mostly didn't work. So we were taken to, it's called SCAERS, it's a recycling center in Glen Ellen, where wealthier districts, when they get new books, send their old books there. I was, I had to teach a speech class, and so the books that I got from this recycling center, the only ones I could get were from 1979, so like there's Hitler mustaches on everyone. And then students were using them. They're like, "Mr. B, look at this. There's racist things written in here." So soon we had no books whatsoever. Things at Latino Youth are much, much better now. We've got smart boards. Books get ordered there at the beginning of the year, new textbooks. And what happened was, we formed a union. So I know that charter operators like to say, you know, they exchange autonomy for accountability, like they like to say that they're accountable, right? The only reason they're accountable is that you can close them easily, right? Open and close them easily. But I think this board has shown that you can open and close district schools easily. Like accountability in a charter school is when we form a union there and we FOIA budgets and we move money from administration, our public tax dollars from administration into the classroom, not just in the form of teacher salaries, but also in the form of the resources like they have in my school. So I would encourage you to publicly advocate for the charter operators who are trustees of our public tax dollars, for them to sign neutrality agreements with the union. Because we make sure that the resources, that our tax dollars, get spent in the classroom. I'll give you one quick example.
Mr. Bayron, can you please conclude?
Super quick example. When we organized the UNO Charter Schools in 2013, the CEO of UNO, Juan Rangel, was making $266,000 to supervise 16 schools. The CEO of Chicago Public Schools at that time was making $250,000 to supervise 636 schools, over 600 schools. So it's the right thing with our tax dollars, it's the right thing by the kids. I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
I want to ask a question. You said neutrality. Define that.
So a neutrality agreement, and it's what UNO signed with us, which is why we organized them so quickly, we're asking for in the Noble Schools where we're organizing, it's where the employer signs an agreement to allow, saying that they will not interfere with the employee's decision to make, to decide about whether to have a union or not. So what we see when they don't sign those, they have captive audience meetings, they don't allow union organizers to talk to teachers without the principal being in the room. All we want is a fair process. If teachers don't want it, that's fine. But when you're held in a captive audience meeting, you're told lies about things, your boss intimidates you, they put out things, like as Noble has, saying that they're against the union coming in, they're against teachers exercising this federal right that they have, that's intimidating. There's a power relationship there. And that's why in public schools where there are no right-to-work laws, over 95% of teachers join unions, right? It's not because they're greedy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please.
My name is Sibellen Samways, I'm sorry, Smigel. And I have two children that are attending or have attended CICS schools. I've been a part of the CICS community for 11 years. My daughter graduated from CICS in 2015 and was a salutatorian for her graduating class. Currently, I have my son at CICS Bucktown, and I also had nieces and nephews who have graduated from CICS schools. My children both love CICS schools because the teachers are absolutely committed to their success. They are caring, constantly checking in on my children, and are extremely devoted. The personalized learning model that has been set up has worked so well for my children, and I know their needs are being met every day in school. They are being challenged and supported when needed. My son is thriving at school due to his wonderful teacher who motivates him and sets high standards for his personalized way of learning. The rigorous curriculum was, has allowed my daughter, who is now a rising junior in high school, to be extremely successful and exceed in class. Thank you CPS for the 20-year partnership with CICS. Thank you for the new terms of our charter renewal. The charter renewal affords CICS the opportunity to continue to provide an excellent and innovative education to Chicago students. From a proud parent at CICS school, we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. And our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, members of the board, everyone here. My name is Alejandro Vega, and I'm very happy to be here today and have the opportunity to hear all this, what's going on. And I wish that everyone in here have my experience with this partnership between CPS and CICS. 13 years ago, I had my oldest daughter, Karen Vega, and when I see these kids coming here, I remind, 13 years ago, when she was getting into kindergarten at CICS West Belton. And today, at this time, she's getting into college. So she's getting into UIC, and today was her first day. She was very scared, again, but very happy at the same time to, you know, into this new life, you know, for her. So when I say that, it's because I'm very happy to say, I didn't know CPS on the other side because I got lucky, probably. It was my first choice, and I get into CICS right away. So, but I knew that, you know, the teachers were committed and the environment in the school were exactly as the others say, getting children ready in the mind that they had to get in college and not just begin college, but finish college. So I hope that goes into my daughter's mind right now. And I'm pretty sure that, because I have three other children, my second is getting into, this is second year of North Town, CICS again, and I have two more still in West Belton, Northwest Side. So again, I'm very thankful for this partnership, you know, that started 20 years ago, and I hope that, you know, this continues for all the 20 or 40 years ago into the Chicago land area, Chicago Public School community. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. And our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Edith Prado, and I'm a mother of three children. One who is entering his second year in high school and two who attend CICS Irving Park. As a parent, I've been very involved with my children's school since it opened up back in 2007. And throughout the years, I have developed great relationships with the directors, teachers, and staff. As a mother of a sped student, I have been impressed with the level of education my son has received at Irving Park. And throughout the collaboration between parent, teacher, and the school as a whole, has set up my son for success. I value the willingness and the effort Irving Park takes to listen to my concerns and find the solution and the tools that will further aid in my son's education. For that reason, I am grateful that a school such as CICS Irving Park works with students who come from diverse learning styles. And it is comforting to know that, no matter what the student's background is, they are given as much opportunity in learning as any student. By extending the charter renewal, it will give students such as my son a continued quality education and services for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prado. And Mr. President, our next speakers will be from UCSN, and they will be speaker number 17, please, Joel Pollak, followed by speaker number 13, Gerardo Gomez. We will then have speaker 49, Luis Lopez, and speaker 60, Maisha Copeland. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Buenos dias, President Clark, distinguished board members, Dr. Jackson, and Mr. Claypool. My name is Joel Pollak, and I am honored to serve UNO Charter School Network as Chief Education Officer. I'm here today mindful of the many serious issues facing our district and our society, but with a very specific purpose, to respectfully request your approval of amendments to change the names of three of our schools, affirm the longstanding operating names at two campuses, and change the name of our parent network. Joining me today are parents, students, and colleagues here, as well as in the observation room. Some of them will speak to our school name changes, and I would like to speak briefly about our network name change. You've all reviewed our amendments, our supporting documentation, and letters of support illustrating how seriously we have taken engaging school communities around these changes. I hope you can see a fraction of that today based on our collective presence. We are all excited to begin this next chapter in our network's history. Our reason for this name change is simple. A new name enables us to embrace the growth and evolution of our organization, dispel any confusion over former affiliations, and provide a clear vision for the continued success of our schools on behalf of our students. In Spanish, acero is the word for the building material steel. It evokes strength, resilience, and the enduring impact embodied by our collective of high-performing charter schools, outstanding educators and professionals, and inspiring students, families, and alumni. This name honors our roots in the Latino community, recognizes a strong foundation built over nearly two decades, and fortifies us to continue to reach even higher. Acero is also an acronym that spells out our values: achievement, community, excellence, resilience, and optimism. We have updated our mission and vision along with these values to reflect our evolution, more clearly articulate who we are, and better define what success looks like. This concludes my statement. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. And our next speaker, please, Gerardo Gomez.
Good morning, President Clark, district distinguished board members, and Mr. Claypool. My name is Gerardo Gomez, and I am a student at Soccer Academy High School. The students are very excited about changing the name to Soto High School. You may know that because part of our school name was soccer. We weren't able to fully compete in sports, especially soccer. Many of the students and parents have worked really hard to change this for a long time so that our teams can play in more tournaments. We have some really great athletes, and we want them and our teams to be able to complete. I care about this school and all it has to offer. I'm excited about this change and everything that all supporters of the school have done to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. And our next speaker, please, Mr. Lopez.
Good morning, President Clark, distinguished board, and members of the, and members, and Mr. Claypool. My name is Luis Lopez, and I'm a student at Soccer as well. We're very happy with the new name because it was selected by the students and a joint effort across my entire school. The school chose a name that represented qualities like bravery, courage, intelligence, and leadership. Victoria Soto was also a teacher at Sandy Hook, Newtown, Connecticut. We were inspired by her story and her commitment to her students. We're proud to attend the school as named in her honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And our next speaker, please, Maisha Copeland.
Good afternoon, President Clark, distinguished board members, Mr. Claypool, and Dr. Jackson. I am Maisha Copeland, the principal of Roberto Clemente Elementary School, which is located in the Gellwood Community on the Northwest Side. Since 2012, we have been serving approximately 500 elementary students each year. I am happy to be here on behalf of our students and on behalf of an organization that is deeply committed to student achievement and continuous improvement. This organization has always believed in the importance of choosing names that embody the values and qualities that we want to model for our students. I believe that we achieved that with both the Clemente name at our school and the new acero name for the network. Acero schools celebrate individual schools while building a common foundation for the entire network. Although the name honors our origins, it recognizes that our organization has grown and evolved. Just as we push our students to keep aiming higher, we have to do the same as an organization. It is time to move ahead, and a new name helps us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. And our next speakers, Mr. President, will be speaker number 18, Amy Shuffleton, followed by speaker 35, Betsy Vanderkook, and then speaker 38, Andy Naguire.
As this last group exits, it's very noteworthy to notice the tremendous spirit and support shown by all of you coming to make your point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last call for Amy Shuffleton. Last call for Betsy Vanderkook. Last call for Andy Naguire. Moving on to the next speakers, we'll have speaker 20, Aretha Cummings, followed by speaker 30, Kid Day, and speaker 54, LaCassia Lewis. Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Please proceed.
No problem. Good afternoon. How you all doing today? On behalf of Chicago Collegian, I have, I'm a mother of three. One's deceased, so, excuse me, my 13-year-old, he's a student at Chicago Collegian. He's been there since Chicago Collegian had opened up, since fourth grade. He's doing very good. I love Chicago Collegian. When he's failing back, they called me, let me know, "Hey, I'm gonna need him." It's at 5 o'clock. They spend the time. I have a six-year-old. He's in sixth grade now. I mean, excuse me, 11. He's in sixth grade now. He had the opportunity. He's reading at the eighth grade level now. He had a chance to go to Northwestern College on behalf of Chicago Collegian. He spent three weeks there doing shorthand writing. He's going back. He's gonna take up forensic science next. He's very smart. They teach him. They challenge them. So I ask you all, beg you all, please, vote that kindergarten. They need it. They challenge our kids. They give our kids the time. They definitely get mad because my eighth grade was playing games. He ain't want to do no work, none at all. I tell him, "Look, you need education, baby." Guess what? Teachers called me, "I need him." They took the time out for him. He made to eighth grade. He know what he doing. He made to eighth grade, my sixth grade. I have a six, have a seventh grade. She's my granddaughter. So I have a sixth, seventh, and eighth. So I ask you all, please, put that kindergarten in there. They need it. They spend the time with our kids that they need, giving them their one-on-one, because our kids need that one-on-one. We need it. In our black community, we need that one-on-one. All our kids, we need the parents in, and we need the teachers. Thank you. Now have a blessing.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. And our next speaker, please, speaker 30, Kid Day, last call. The next speaker, LaCassia Lewis, last call. Moving on to the next speakers, Mr. President, we have speaker number 31, please, Yvonne Johnson, followed by speaker 41, Eddie Miranda, and then we'll have speaker 32, Joy Clundinning.
Good afternoon. Hi, President, board members. My name is Yvonne Johnson, and I am a Noble alumni parent. And once again, I stand in front of you for great cause. But the last time I talked to you guys, I was talking about my son accomplishment. He's at Northwestern University, second year. So now, I share with you about this morning, I would like to talk about the SB 1 bill, which I'm sure you all also is familiar with, and how important this bill is for all the schools in this state. This bill will ensure more equitable funding for every school in CPS, including the public charter schools. Noble has been informing parents about the bill all summer long, and I have been Noble has been informing parents about the bill all summer long, and I have been keeping up the data on it. Most recently, I saw Marcus Evans, my state rep, at an event, and I approached him, and I chatted with him about the SB 1 bill, and of course, he supports the bill. And I urge him to continue to fight, and I will continue to advocate for this Senate Bill 1. I know things are up in the air right now, but you do have a budget that you will be looking at today. I urge you to ensure that all schools, including public charter schools, are funded equally. According to the Senate Bill 1 in your budget, our Noble parents will be vigilant as you are making the decisions. We, as parents, are concerned about this bill, and we want to make sure that this is fair for us and the students too. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Glad your sign is doing so well.
Oh, he's doing good.
Our next speaker, please.
Hello. Good morning. I mean, good morning. Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Miranda. A proud Pritzker College Prep alum and a current student at the University of Michigan at Ann Arbor. Like most Chicago natives, I attended and graduated from a CPS elementary school, a school I will forever hold close to my heart. Although my elementary school provided me a quality education, my education sadly did not reflect itself on the city's high school selective enrollment placement test. As a result, I found myself with two options: either go to my neighborhood high school or join the Noble Network. Since my neighborhood high school did not have the best reputation academically, before I knew it, I ended up becoming a freshman at Pritzker College Prep. If it was not for Pritzker and the Noble Network, I wouldn't be standing in front of you all today with the success I've had throughout these past five years of my life. It has been through the Noble Network where I attended a fully-paid two-week college summer program at the Columbia University, traveled to Italy, had my voice heard by millions, including celebrities and veterans in Washington, DC through the Concert for Valor, and get into the University of Michigan. I made numerous lifetime friendships, not only with people in Chicago, but also people around the country and world. I owe a large part of my success to Pritzker and the Noble Network for giving me a chance to show not only others, but myself, what I am made of. There is nothing hard work and discipline can't get you, a quality taught and instilled in you from these wonderful schools. I believe the Noble Network charter schools are there to save children of Chicago, kids that aren't able to accurately show their potential through these placement tests, and were left with neighborhood high schools that haven't figured out the system, as well as the selective enrollment high schools or the Noble Network. No kid is left behind in this community, and more kids need to experience the opportunities Noble has to offer. Thank you, and go Blue.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Our next speaker, please, Joy Clandening.
Good afternoon. Joy Clandening for Raise Your Hand. So we spoke last week about the budget, so you have our comments on that. We asked you to pause and really examine carefully every item before you voted to approve it. Today, we wanted to address this issue of integrity in the district. We know this is one of your three key things in your recent mission. As you know, we come to all the board meetings. We're an organization that's been around for years, working humbly with other organizations that have been around for decades, and many of the things we've presented were presented in 2010, and 2012, and 2015. So respect for us would be not asking us for more time, but telling us your stand on some of those positions. Respect would be following the law. For example, the space utilization data for schools is still not up. That's eight months overdue. The testing schedule that just came out does not include what the tests are used for, which is required by the new truth in testing law. Respect would be not voting yes to everything on the agenda month after month, but showing some independence from the mayor. Respect would be taking a public stand at risk to your own personal status, speaking out against the mayor's policies when they hurt our students. We've been in Springfield. We've been at the Thompson Center. We've been at City Hall, again, with many other organizations, groups, students, parents, leaders, and we'd love to have you there with us. We would like you to be honest about the disconnect between the educational policies in the schools where the mayor and some of you send your children, such as the Lab School, Francis Parker in Waldorf, and the policies you impose on our children in the public schools, such as excessive high-stakes standardized testing, personalized learning, which replaces human interaction, and a decrease in arts education in addition to sparse social-emotional supports. Those are all things that we know many parents manage to find for their children, but often not in our public school system. The list goes on and on, not hiding important announcements in Friday afternoon press releases. And we just want to say this thing about respect: that respect and integrity is actually, for us who have kids in the system, is not so much about the tone you use and being polite. It's about the actions you take and what you demonstrate. When parents have to go on a hunger strike to get their neighborhood high school reopened after years of diligent work to do that, that is huge disrespect from the district. And just seeing what's playing out today, and which parents and community members you seem to be willing to listen to, and which you do not seem to be willing to listen to, that's what respect is all about. So we are hopeful that with this platform of integrity in the new mission, that this will really be something people take seriously. And I won't quote -- well, I'll just finish. I know I'm done. I'll just finish. You do say CPS will demonstrate integrity in all its relationships through clear, honest communications by achieving results and respecting the expertise in our diverse communities. And I'm just gonna leave you with this Civic Federation report from a year ago about boards of education throughout the state, and an addendum that's come out recently about streaming things live while they're going on.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson, when I hear individuals, this is not for you to comment. She's gonna comment. You can.
Yes. I know the rules.
Oh, well, thank you. But at any event, Dr. Jackson, when I hear people say that we're not in compliance with the law, obviously, that's troubling. I know that with our general counsel here and conversations with you, I feel confident that we are. But yet, people come here and say very powerfully that we are not.
I can't speak to, unless you're forced, is back. I can't speak to the facilities comment. The testing one did pique my interest, and I was gonna follow up to see which part was missing. So I don't know enough about Ms. Clandening's claim, but I was gonna have somebody follow up. And if you want to stick around.
We're happy to send you the laws.
Yeah. Well, is it a new law? Because we presented.
It was a law. It was about a year and a half ago, as the result of a lot of advocacy about truth in testing.
Okay. So I can have our testing coordinator come down just to clarify that. But we.
To clarify for us, Raise Your Hand needs to send you the state law.
No, that's not what I'm asking for.
And about testing.
We're not here. This is not about a gotcha. You raised a very, very legitimate issue. So don't reduce it. Don't reduce it to a gotcha. If there's something we're not doing that we should be doing, you have every right to point it out, and you should, and you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers will be Speaker number 55, please, Sarah Stalinga, followed by Speaker number 58, Karen Palmer-Klein, and Speaker 33, Gerald Washington.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Sarah Ray Stalinga. I'm the Director of the University of Chicago Urban Education Institute. And President Clark, CEO, Claypool, members of the board, Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for hearing our support for the modifications that we've submitted to you today for UChicago Charter. I stand here shoulder to shoulder with colleagues from the Urban Education Institute, with the CEO of UChicago Charter, Tanika Island Childress. We have parents and campus directors and students here to support our efforts around these modifications. As you may know, UChicago Charter School is a unit within the larger Urban Education Institute at the University of Chicago, which includes the UChicago Consortium, whose research has been referenced several times today; the University of Chicago Urban Teacher Education Program, which is entering its 15th year of training urban teachers; and UChicago Impact, which disseminates research-based tools, including the Five Essentials, which is used here in Chicago public schools and throughout the country. We appreciate our partnership. I just would like to state that upfront with Chicago Public Schools around all of these efforts, including UChicago Charter. And I also would like to publicly recognize to you and to the public, Dr. Jackson and her team, for the excellent work that they do in working with us around all of these aspects of our work. UChicago Charter School is an 1,800-student, four-campus, pre-K through 12th-grade network that serves the South Side of Chicago. We are proud to say that we have four campuses, three of which are Level 1, one is a Level 2. We have also brought new materials today, which you'll be receiving, books that have studied the elementary model of UChicago Charter that demonstrate that our elementary campuses are effectively closing the achievement gap between our African-American students and white students in the state of Illinois. And so appropriately, our material modifications that we're bringing before you aim to bring the same kind of codification of the model to our sixth through 12th-grade model. And as such, the two modifications that we bring before you, while they are presented to you as separate modifications, we would like you to consider them both as appropriate efforts, strategic efforts to improve and enhance the work that we're doing in sixth through 12th grade in UChicago Charter School.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerald Washington. I'm the Chief Academic Officer of University of Chicago Charter School. I'm here to humbly submit our amendment for modification for our Carter G. Woodson campus. We are making the request to the Chicago Board of Education today that we not enroll any sixth-grade students for the 2017 through 2018 school year. We are making this request because our enrollment has dropped dramatically from a high of 420 students to 290 students in our last calendar school year. We are also making a claim that our students who will stay with us, our seventh and eighth-grade students, will be guaranteed a spot in enrollment in our school, and they will also be guaranteed enrollment in our high school moving forward. So we respectfully submit this amendment for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. And our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Palmer-Klein. I'm the Director of Woodlawn High School. I'm here to talk to you about what our request for the opening of our new building will do for our students. At Woodlawn, we have 400 to 430 students in our high school each year, and we're very proud to be a Level 1 school with all of our students gaining acceptance to college for the past five years. We are confident that our new building will take our students even further, as we push for all of our students to not only be accepted to college, but also to graduate from college. We also believe that increasing our space from 650 students to 750 students will allow more students to have the same opportunity within our network. For our new building, just some of the high points of what it is going to bring to us: things such as a green roof with gardening plots, a college resource centerpiece center, which will be the centerpiece as you walk in, a fully air-conditioned building, which would be super, a regulation-sized gymnasium so that we can play our first home basketball game outside of the South Side Y in the last two years, an engineering science lab, dance studio, and fitness rooms for both students and adults, a media room, as well as a fully-equipped kitchen and cafeteria. The building's also an asset for the community. Located at 63rd and University in the Woodlawn neighborhood, the exterior is designed based on African kentakloth. It features 71,000 square feet of space with academic classrooms on three stories. There's ample parking, landscaped walkways, recreation fields, and a track that will open to the public, and will also be seeking to be LEED Silver certified. Management will be handled by the University of Chicago, which is very familiar working with K through 12 schools. I wanted to also let you know that we are prepared to move in in January of 2018, which is not ideal, but we are ready to do that. And we have reorganized our staff to be ready for that over winter break. And we've also created a revised calendar to make sure that the move-in will go very smoothly as we come up to it in January. Thank you.
Quick question, too, actually. You mentioned LEED Silver. That's outstanding. I don't know if everyone understands what that means from the environmental perspective, but that's very good. You also mentioned air conditioning. I may have missed your point. What did you say?
We opened without air conditioning in our building, and it was really hot. Last week was our first week of school. It was hot for everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. President, we'll continue with the speakers list. Our next speakers will be Speaker number 39, please, Tim Noonan, followed by Speaker 43, Rena Robinson, Speaker 53, Pavlin Jankov, 56, Mark Kaplan, and the last speaker, Speaker 57, Kimberly Hopson.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Noonan. I am here to discuss the proposed changes with the closing of NTA and reconfiguration of that area. I'm concerned so much from this standpoint of traffic, because Stevenson opens up there in Chinatown. You have three -- you got South Loop Elementary having then three campuses, then there being a high school, and then there's Daystar, and then you got Windtrust Arena, all combined in such a small area. So I'm kind of concerned that this is gonna cause congestion and a threatening area for children to be walking to school. Now, there's some initiatives, such as CMAP in Chicago 2040, Chicago 2050, and Vision Zero, that are trying to look at, trying to disperse traffic. But in this plan, it appears that it's kind of causing more, kind of tightening the area. So I think that I would like to see that, if there could be a traffic study in that area. The last traffic study was back in April 25, 2006, and then identified 10,000 cars going past 20 West Cermac on that day. So I think, I believe that a traffic study would be overdue, considering the other items that, from 2011 to 2015, in zip codes of 60605 and 60616, there was a 10,156 increase of population. Yet, there's also, there are 3,340 units that are under construction and 4,000 that are planned. So and actually, DNA last year said there's a total of 15,000 units that are going up in our plans. So I was hoping that we were, that there would be consideration for a traffic study of the area, save from.
Mr. Noonan, can you please conclude?
Oh, sure, sure. Just a traffic study for the area described there. Thank you.
That address you gave, that was right there. That was right in front of NTA, right? Right before you go on the divada.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot of traffic there.
Yeah, I know.
Today. Okay.
If you need any of the information on that, I could give it to them if they want to.
If you've got something, give it to us.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, please.
He can get his contact information, John.
Thank you. And our next speaker, please, Rena Robinson, last call. Moving on to the next speaker, Speaker 53, Pavlin Jankov, please.
Good afternoon, Pavlin Jankov with the Chicago Teachers Union. You know, this board is waiting to breathe a sigh of relief about state funding, knowing they would still have a $269 million hole to be supposedly filled with local revenue that is yet unidentified and uncommitted to by the mayor. And even with that, leaving a budget that still wastes $100 million a day, $100 million on payday loans to keep schools open. But I'd like to remind the board what its failure to secure revenue years ago has meant. District-run schools have lost nearly $200 million in funding since 2016. The budget shows that hundreds of teacher positions are cut this year and over 1,000 less than 2016. And even as the district drills down into ELL scores to put a positive spin on test results, the district is now cutting support for ELL students. This year's budget cuts bilingual teachers by 45. Compared to 2016, they are down by 140, a 7% cut. And despite the administration's claims that special education supports have increased, the budget shows there are 66 fewer special education teacher positions this year and a loss of 120 since 2016. And while the state moves to a hold harmless provision for funding, CPS flouts that good sense for its own schools, doubling down on student-based budgeting, stripping necessary resources from neighborhood schools, suffering from destabilization in the community and population loss. And this district's support for a tax credit program for the wealthy to funnel $75 million from public education funds to private schools will further destabilize the same schools hurt year after year by the student-based budgeting model. This district needs to reject this poison pill voucher program and commit to a revenue plan that not only closes immediate budget holes, but also brings back the program cuts from our schools and creates a real hold harmless for our under-resourced neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jankov. And our next speaker, please, Mark Kaplan.
Good afternoon. My name's Mark Kaplan. I serve as a community representative on the Uplift Community High School's local school council. I'm speaking today as a representative of the council and also on behalf of the teaching staff at the school. The main concern I'm bringing to the board today is a situation of a nonexistent leadership on the part of the principal at Uplift. I think you probably recall in the spring when a group of Uplift students addressed the board meeting with a proposal. students addressed the board meeting with a proposal to the school district to change Columbus Day into Indigenous Peoples' Day. They were complimented by both Mr. Clark and Ms. Jackson. This, that presentation is a reflection of the school, the student body, the dedicated teaching staff, and the supportive parents and community members. We pride ourselves as being a college preparatory, local, social justice high school with a teaching staff that's gone above and beyond to help students develop to their full potential. We understand the great challenges that Uplift has faced over the years, faced with a board that never really wanted that school there and has done its best from the very start to hamstring our efforts over the years. Having said that, I want to bring to the attention of the board the situation of a principal who has been missing in action, does not work with the staff, the LSC, the students, the parents, or the community. This has led to a serious decline in student enrollment and the student body, which has presented, put our school in serious risk. The principal, instead of working with the stakeholders to build up the school, has not been present. When present, she has many times blocked efforts to build recruitment or stymied programs that are in line with the mission of the school, the needs of the students, and the overall progress of the school. We respect the role that she played in getting the school off the ground.
Mr. Kaplan.
Right. I'll finish. But it has become increasingly clear over the last few years that it's no longer the commitment in practice to the success of our schools. With the week to the beginning of school, we'd like to meet directly with the board and the chief education officer to discuss how we can rectify the situation. With respect to the privacy of all parties, I've not gone into any details, plus you only have two minutes, but I'd like to tender to the board several documents that go into more clearly the situation we're talking about. I have my name and phone number. I look forward to hearing from the board and chief education officer so that we can move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. And our next speaker, please, Speaker number 57, Kimberly Hobson.
As the speaker approaches, as the next speaker. Dr. Jackson, do we need to clarify a comment that was made by not this speaker, but the speaker before?
Yeah, I was going to wait to the end. I'm sure--
You want to wait?
--board members.
You want to wait?
Yeah, I can wait till the end.
Okay.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. To President Clark, the Board of Education, and to the leaders of Chicago Public Schools, we are from Youth Connection Charter School, and we are speaking just to give and express our gratitude to Chicago Public Schools for a continued partnership. Since 1997, YCCS has served vulnerable youth in Chicago area who are at risk of dropping out. And we seek the opportunity to continue our services to the communities in which we are located. We are a Level One school with 19 campuses located throughout Chicago, and we are proud of the services and the work that our campuses are doing. We seek the opportunity to change the names of two YCCS campuses to better represent our continuous improvement, reflect educat -- excuse me, educational programs and services offered at each campus, and to improve community relations. And we also seek to increase the number of seats at Westside Holistic Leadership Academy, based on scale, to address and support the academic and vocational needs in the Austin community for small school campuses with holistic approaches, increasing the number of high school graduates and the number of graduates who are ready and prepared to participate in the workforce with certifications and job skills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobson. And, Mr. President, this concludes public participation.
Dr. Jackson.
Yeah, there was one point made by Speaker number 53 that suggested that we've cut EL funding this year, which is absolutely not true. EL funding for the district is primarily Title III funded, so there would be no incentive to cut EL funding when it's all provided, for the most part, by the federal government. So I know a lot of times people come up here and say things, we can't combat everything, but I'm really proud of the work we've done for our EL students here in the district, and I could not let that inaccuracy stand.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Board members, are there any questions from the public comments? Okay, this concludes public participation. And we will now proceed to go into our executive session. Is there a motion?
I move for the passage of motion number 17-0828-MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subject specified in the motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Aye.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
And Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's.
We're going to close session. We will reconvene the Board of Education meeting. Madam Secretary, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will start with items from closed session. And I'll begin with items from the General Counsel. With council retentions, these items do require a vote. The first report is the law firm Borkin and Skahill LTD for continued retention. The second report, the law firm Riley Safer Homes and Consula LLP for continued retention. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
So moved. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will continue with settlements and awards. These items do require a vote. The first report, workers' compensation payment for lump-sum settlement for Eric Killingsworth, case number 14WC31436. The second report, workers' compensation payment for lump-sum settlement for Wanda Betancourt, case number 15WC7974. And the third report, approved settlement of Mercedes Parks and Gail Jackson grievances. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with one law personnel matter. This item does require a vote. Appoint Assistant General Counsel, Department of Law, Lauren Buford. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with items from the chief executive officer, and these items do require a vote. And I will begin with talent recommendations. The first report, transfer and appoint chief administrative officer effective August 1, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief administrative officer since August 1, 2017, for Jorge Macias. The second report, transfer and appoint chief of family and community engagement in education effective June 26, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of family and community engagement in education since June 26, 2017, Harold Johnson. The third report, transfer and appoint chief of language and cultural education effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of language and cultural education since July 23, 2017, for Ernesto Matias. The fourth report, transfer and appoint chief of nutrition and facilities operations effective August 1, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of nutrition and facilities operations since August 1, 2017, for Leslie Fowler. The fifth report, transfer and appoint chief of schools effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of schools since July 23, 2017, for Shante Higambadam. The sixth report, transfer and appoint chief of schools effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of schools since July 23, for William Cle. The seventh report, transfer and appoint chief of schools effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of schools since July 23, 2017, for Leila Majestorovic. The eighth report is transfer and appoint chief of schools effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of schools since July 23, 2017, for Brian Metcalfe. And the ninth report, transfer and appoint chief of schools effective July 23, 2017, and ratify all lawful actions taken as chief of schools since July 23, 2017, for Cheryl Watkins. Mr. President, I'll continue with one principal removal termination of principal contract, and it reads, remove and replace the principal of Ira F. Aldridge Elementary School and terminate the principal contract. And I'll continue with one personnel matter. Authorize and ratify residency waiver for the senior vice president of finance special needs position effective August 24, 2017, for Ron Denard. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Guzman on this matter. And I will continue with one other matter for non-resident tuition. Adopt finding that pupils are nonresidents of the city of Chicago indebted to Chicago Public Schools for non-resident tuition. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote. And they are: First report, resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the dismissal of Lori Narin, tenure teacher assigned to Daniel Boone Elementary School. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. And the third report, resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And for the record, I would like to note that on August 22, 2017, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Board 04-1 and 105ILCS 5/34-84. His recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons, and he also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I believe Vice President Guzman has a motion, please.
Yes, I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of July 26, 2017 pursuant to Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Act. Board members reviewed these minutes and determined that the need for confidentiality exists. Therefore, the minutes of the closed session meeting held on July 26, 2017 shall be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. And I believe Member Furlong has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of July 26, 2017, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and that such records of proceedings be posted on the Chicago Board of Education website in accordance to Section 206B of the Open Meetings Act.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
I will proceed with a roll call. Member Furlong.
Yes.
Member Rivera.
Yes.
Vice President Guzman.
Yes.
Member Dr. Hines.
Yes.
Member Ward.
Yes.
And President Clark.
Yes.
Six i's, zero n's. I will now continue with real estate items. These items do require a vote. First report, amend board report 170524OP3, disposition of bids received for the sale of property located at 5055 South State Street, the former Adex Farron School site. The second report, disposition of bids received for the sale of property located at 2221 South Lawndale, former Ignasi Paderewski School. The third report, disposition of bids received for the sale of property located at 6206 South Racine, former Woods Community Academy. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers, since the titles in board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with the resolutions and proceed with the one policy. These items do require a vote. The first resolution is RS1, and I would like to note for the record that there was a revision made to Pages 1 and Number 3 on the reference to the CIP exhibit. So that was corrected, Mr. President, and the final will be in the agenda of action for RS1, and that's for the budget resolution. We proceed with RS2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. And I'll continue with the one policy, that will be PO1. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. So noted. I'll continue with the communication regarding the location of the September 27, 2017 board meeting. And this is to advise that the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, September 27, 2017, will be held at the CPS Loop Office, 42 West Madison Street, Garden Level Board Room. And the meeting will begin at 10:30. Public participation guidelines are available on www.cpsboe.org or by calling the board office at 773-553-1600 for the September 27, 2017 board meeting. Advance registration to speak and observe will be available beginning Monday, September 2015, at 10:30 a.m., and will close on Tuesday, September 26, at 5 p.m., or until all slots are filled. You can advance register during the registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. And the public participation segments of the meeting will begin as indicated on the meeting agenda and proceed for no more than the 60 registered speakers. Mr. President, I'll continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote. And I will proceed with EX1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for President Clark on EX8. I will continue with EX9, 10, 11, and 12. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Member Dr. Hines on EX12. We then have EX13, OP1, AR1, 2, and 3. And then we will continue with PR1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. So noted. We will then continue with additional items on the public agenda, Mr. President, that do not require a vote, and they are EX14, 15, and AR1. Mr. President, these items just need to be, I'm sorry, AR4. Let me repeat that. So I'll continue with additional items that do not require a vote, and it's EX14, 15, and AR4. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please, Mark, received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.